Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, congratulations on your election.
Thanks, you too.
Uh, yes, thank you for voting in while I was COVID and stuff. But I'm back. Um, Mr. Markin did let us know that he is not available. Great, the details, the ballot. Uh, Clark Miller, congratulations on your reelection. It needs to be taken well. You got it. April Carlson, has it? Greg?
Greg.
Darcy? Has it? Conley?
Here.
Myself. Here. And Markin is out. And Ms. Minnie?
Here.
Thank you. And Danielle, congratulations on your reelection. Um, agenda adjustment and approval. Any adjustments? I would feel.
What's the approval?
I second. Any discussions? Okay, agenda is approved. Announcement? I have one. Uh, the baseball and softball teams are having a bash fundraiser on February 10th. It's the Saturday night before the Super Bowl. It's gun raffle, meat raffle, um, all the raffles. And uh, tickets are thirty dollars. All the softball and baseball players have them to sell if you'd like to buy one from a player. Otherwise, I have. Are they moving on? Uh, community input? Are you here to give community input at all?
Oh, very attending.
Okay, perfect, welcome. Um, my student board member report and Jacob, I think you're reading something that our board rep.
Yeah, uh, so Lily was unable to be here, but she sent me an email with a small paragraph to read. So it says, "Good evening, board members. I'm sorry that I was unable to attend this meeting tonight, but I would still like to inform you about what's been happening at our school. Our Lancer Locker or the school food shelf has been a great hit. The girls' basketball team recently held a coat drive to donate to Lancer Locker. Again, abundance of winter items. Coming up in late February, our FCC LA club is hosting a winter formal. This will be a dress, there will be dress up days leading up to this dance. We've heard that many people are excited to attend. With finals this week, everyone is a little bit nervous, but I think it is safe to say that everyone is very excited to start the next one. Thank you, Lily."
Thanks, Lily.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, we have a, we're on board member report and we have a report from health and safety. Is anyone allowed to speak to this?
I'm, I'm on the health and safety committee. We just reviewed, um, you can go through the minutes too on your own if you want to. Um, our next meeting's February 8th. And we reviewed basically building safety in regards to lead testing in the water and some things that are changing with that at the state level, which is good. We don't really see any issue with that, just for the record, from the one that's concerned about that.
Um, the only thing that's ever flagged in our water is specifically pot fillers like in this building because they don't use them all that often.
Yeah.
So you just have to run them ahead of time because when water sits in any pipe, it.
Yeah.
Gets icky.
Right.
Really technical terms.
Um, we reviewed, um, some of the, oh, some of the staff are going to be going through boiler training. That's up and coming. Um, we also reviewed the employee handbook in regard to talking about rope lights and things that are happening in some of the classrooms that have had to be addressed because they are a fire issue. Not sure if there's a plan, I can't recall if they were planning on having maybe somebody coming in do an informal walkthrough and just educate.
Yeah.
Further educate.
Yep, we're gonna do some of that. We also, Brittany was kind enough to go through the last several years of the mock OSHA reports and put them into an Excel format so I could go through. And that's gonna be one of the projects I look at is, you know, where do we have repeat violations? Do we have repeat violations? What can we do to troubleshoot those? So, so that's gonna be really good. And we're gonna start updating crisis management plan again too. So that's usually an ongoing project.
And with the crisis management, there's also, um, we're still in the process of putting together the gold bags for classrooms in case of lockdown or otherwise. So that's still an ongoing project and we'll get, we'll just keep updating it to get more information. So we have three more meetings until April. So you'll get a few more reports for months as things come up. Does anybody have anything else to add? I don't know if Pat has anything to add.
Pretty much it.
Yeah. Um, I have one request from on your committee meetings again. The eight oh six crisis management policy needs to be updated. And your group is going to know what needs to go in that and what we do and don't do more than I will.
Okay.
So if you could add that to your agenda for next meeting, I would appreciate it.
Yes. And is there a meeting for that, the prior to our next meeting, do you know?
I believe we're gonna talk to Dan, I don't know if it's by email or just to make sure we have everything set up for.
I think it's, yeah, I think we don't need, not scheduled yet, but I think we're supposed to be prior.
Prior February.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So I'll shoot something out to Dan and let him know.
Okay, great. Alright, thanks Nikki. Any other, um, board member reports from, no, Greg?
Well, we have a facility meeting today, which kind of update on the handlers and the air stuff that we're working on for next year. No real moves yet.
And there, and there is the Apex facilities report up there too.
Yeah.
And then, then the section?
Yeah.
It's, yeah. Oh. Do you just?
So, do you wanna speak to this?
Quickly. Mind if I get up front here? Do you guys recall when we started the IEQ project? We, part of that was doing a facility assessment of secondary school. Obviously, this school is new, obviously didn't focus too much down there. This ramp, uh, I know it's like what addition possibly to go to the penthouse. That was, I think, the only thing included in here, but this focuses on the secondary school. What we're looking at is deferred maintenance in that building. Um, and just kind of putting in the tenure plan for you guys to know what's coming up, what things you guys should keep on top of your mind, what the school's already addressed, um, just to get it on your radar. So you can flip through these, it's just kind of talked about the process of how we started doing the assessment and capturing it, um, putting together budgets for you, which now allows you to prioritize the project and tailor them into your plan. Uh, so the executive summary talked about, um, kind of what we looked at, um, looking at IEQ, indoor air quality things, um, deferred maintenance, um, space adequacy, all, all the different factors we took in to go to spit out the information that we'll, we'll go through now. Um, it all starts with a tool, every asset in the school is logged. Um, so if we look at, for example, rooftop unit, we put in what year it was installed, the life expectancy of it, the cost to replace it, and the current working condition of it, which then tells us when it's expected to be due operating. It's not perfect, but it gives you a very good idea of when you can expect to start putting money towards these items. So in this first part here, this looks at the deferred maintenance we identified. If you scroll down a little bit, these are the items that were identified and actually are already being implemented or have been. And that's the IEQ project is the biggest one that will be starting this summer. And then the parking lots at both the district office and the secondary school. Um, we helped with the pre-construction of that, Pat ran the implementation of them. Um, but those have been completed. And then some things that you guys should be aware of moving forward with the HVAC at the district office is twenty-five years old. Will need to be addressed at some point. Security at the school, uh, there's some concerns about fobs aren't on all the exterior doors. Some cameras aren't working anymore, some need to be added to give you full vision throughout the building. Um, also, when you have public, uh, like a game or a theater play, you can't section off the building. So when students come in, the whole school's open, which is also a safety concern, but also for your janitorial staff. You know, areas they cleaned are now getting dirty again, um, so just from an efficiency standpoint. There's roofing, uh, we'll get into more, most of your roofs are actually in pretty good shape. Uh, there's a few sections at the secondary school that will need to be addressed probably in the next ten years. The outdoor athletic spaces, we took a look at those. The turf, uh, or the, the grass that's there should be reseeded and re-leveled. Um, there's been discussions about turf, so obviously before you make a decision on that, you really wanna weigh. Um, you want turf, you wanna stick with grass, but that should be addressed as well as the track is aging. It's in good condition, but you're starting to see some cracks and repairs needed to that. Um, that's something that within the next five to ten years, you should really kind of look at what you wanna do there. If you're willing, if you're gonna stick money into it, fixing what's there, kind of do an overhaul on the existing one. Bus drop off and relocation at the secondary school, this is more of a, a safety thing than the deferred maintenance, but your bus route intersects, uh, parents and staff parking. Uh, so you have some safety concerns as far as students walking through the bus route. And the locker rooms at the secondary school, we'll, we'll look at that a bit further throughout this. Uh, there's the HVAC in it, needs to be updated and the, you know, the type of showers and accessibility that you currently have there really aren't up to today's standards. So it should be something that you guys look at renovating, but then also how you wanna renovate. Do you wanna go to more single user, do you wanna keep them as they are? Windows and doors in your nineteen sixty-five building are due to be replaced, I think you guys are aware of that. And this high school gym stage, that's something that you guys should look at. Um, either refurbishing or I know a lot of districts are actually removing them, hanging a curtain and just kind of have an extra storage. Uh, but the current condition it's in isn't really desirable and should be addressed in some way, either removal or refurbish of. Storage shed, the current storage shed you have at the, uh, secondary school is facing leaks, so the roof's leaking. It's really not size appropriate for the district vehicles and the work they're trying to do in it. Uh, so either looking to replace that or maybe make an addition onto it, uh, or just fix it, but the storage shed needs some repairs as well. And then the elementary school ramp, we had talked about, um, there's, you guys have a lot of storage area and your accessibility into that penthouse is minimal right now, kind of crawling up a shift ladder. So you could look at, it's not a deferred maintenance item, but potentially just moving that ramp, extending it so you can get into there to access more storage and easier maintenance on the units. So what we did is looking at all of your deferred maintenance, uh, in the buildings compared to the cost to replace them, just so you guys can kind of see where you're at in the district. And as you can see, let's see, we're here. Uh, the, the cause, the current deferred maintenance, uh, at the secondary school, there's about twelve million dollars worth of deferred maintenance that you guys are facing. Uh, and this is before the IEQ project, this will be after you complete the IEQ project. You can see the difference, um, brings it down to a very reasonable letter, level. So there's, in the state of Minnesota, I think there's like less than ten percent of school districts are in this green category. So when you guys, when this IEQ project finishes up, you guys, your secondary schools in a very good shape. Um, and obviously your elementary school is in very good shape. So big kudos to the board that has been making these decisions to invest in the schools and also the staff for maintaining the schools. Um, and so in this replacement cost, just keep in mind, all we're looking for is your current infrastructure and taking care of it, replacing it as is. So this doesn't reflect, um, for example, if you guys had initiative from a board or curriculum level to go to, you know, twenty-first century's classrooms or something like that, it's not reflecting this. It's just reflecting what you have and keeping it operating. As you can see that up there, uh, the one thing, the athletic fields, we're in the, kind of the, uh, critical category. So again, as we talked about, you guys should really look at either reinvesting in them or maybe, you know, if you could move the turf or a new complex. Um, but those costs are continuing to creep up. To, to replace what you currently have, um, as well as seven million dollars, as you can see, to, to kind of refurbish it. Uh, your, your press boxes, your stands, your track, your field, you're at four and a half. So the, the longer you get that, uh, kind of delay that investment, the closer you're gonna get to maybe having to completely renovate it or replace it. So these are the items we looked at, site structural, building envelope, your roof systems, rebuilding hardware and equipment, interior surfaces, mechanical systems, plumbing, electrical and fire. So these, and then this will be available for all you guys, we'll try not to go too detailed in it, but you can see all the categories. And again, this is before, when we captured this and went through, um, some of these, a lot of this parking lot has been done. So we'll sit down now with Pat, kind of at the end of the school year and figure out, alright, what improvements have been done? And this will be constantly getting updates, so you guys can kind of track it, uh, and what categories you'll have to spend. But your big categories, your site structural and your mechanical are both being addressed. Um, so that takes away a big chunk of your, your tenure deferred maintenance. This is at your district office, again, a big chunk of that was the parking lot. And then the mechanical systems we talked about aren't currently in the plan to be replaced. Uh, the district is aware of them and it's something that will have to be addressed, uh, in the near future. So again, these are just the costs by year, this is looking at your secondary school. Um, and we break it onto each category, so you can kind of see what's coming due when, uh, the mechanical system's a big part of it, which you're already looking at, and the site structural are the parking lots. So this big chunk here in twenty twenty-four, half of it, um, is already being addressed. This is the same data, just in a table form, so it's telling you what category and what year your, uh, your deferred maintenance is expected to. So this is your secondary school, um, looking at about four and a half million. Again, that's mostly your parking lots and your mechanical systems, which is already being taken care of. Your district office, a lot of the same, and this is very common to have your big, your big expenses in your one because you have a lot of deferred maintenance. So it's all the things that are past, it's exceeding the life expectancy. Um, so when we do these, it's always the first year is the, the largest sum because those are the ones that are all due and then, you know, you kind of prioritize moving forward, how to phase those projects in. Again, so your, your one right now, you're facing about four hundred thousand dollars with the district office. That's past the, uh, life expectancy of that, a hundred thousand is the mechanical systems and a hundred and twenty in parking lot sidewalks, and this has already been addressed in this summer's project. This is a graph showing your current deferred maintenance to the replacement cost. So the closer your deferred maintenance lines get to this replacement cost, you should think about divesting from your building. As you guys can see, you're nowhere near that spot, your buildings are in good condition. You just wanna make sure you continually keep investing in to keep this line, uh, as close to the bottom as you can. And same story for the, the district office, relatively in pretty good shape. And those are just those same tables, uh, summed up in one page with the athletic field added to that. You can kind of see the athletic field deferred maintenance is kind of all past its expected life.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes.
Anywhere in those eighty-four pages, is there any mention of needing to find the space for robotics?
There is not, so this again is looking strictly at your existing, uh, buildings and replacing them, just to get them up to current code and condition. So it's not looking at, um, adding anything, changing curriculum. Um, like I said, like, for example, like robotics, adding a robotics program or something, that would not be looked at here.
Space for, for.
Oh, no.
So for example, if we pour down the stage in the high school gym, the area behind that would be a space and they need a space for their practice. I'm just asking if that's a space for them to do the robotic program and then do today.
It is not, no.
But currently we are using a stage space for practice for robotics. Or it's temporary, it's a temporary plan. So if you could refurbish it in the future?
Yeah.
If it works for them, I don't wanna, I just didn't want to dump a bunch of money into it if we didn't know if it'll work for them yet.
Cause baseball uses that and they use that when they play at games.
Exactly.
But I mean, they, they have donation money to sell a space, you know? It's about two years ago, they got that. Um, so.
So that would be above and beyond these numbers.
And then is there, is it possible to give us the flip snow version of the next sixty pages?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do these really fast, yeah. So as you can see, and again, yeah, I want you guys to look at this and spend time, I don't wanna bore you with an hour long tonight. So if we go through, these are just comparing, you can scroll through these, these are just comparing, uh, your current tax, uh, is compared to neighboring districts, enrollments, ADM, those items. So as we go through these, uh, next pages here, the next section, what you guys will find as you go through this, you can keep scrolling, is all those, the numbers and figures we had include the items we found. So each, each one, every deferred maintenance item we found, we logged, took a picture of and gave you a solution of how you could address it, not that you have to address it. Um, so keep scrolling. Right now, this is, this kind of outlines you different financing avenues that you guys have. So how you could, uh, go to referendum, how, the ways you can levy for it, uh, different bonding you can do for it, ways to find money for it, we kind of outline what's possible. So then at each, each project, we gave you what different financing options available for you guys as you start prioritizing for them, can I really figure out how you wanna fund and set up your plan. So this is just, you can just scroll through these quick, this is just example of all the things we found, we logged for you. Um, showed you the deficiency in them and how they can be addressed. Looking at the athletics, um, obviously a list of the things that either don't need code or are deficient currently, and then just some very high level options. Obviously, you can re-establish it exactly how it is, but just other ways you guys could look at it to maybe centralize it for a press box, for bathrooms, for concessions, um, at, without completely switching all aspects of it. Um, so looking at your security, all the items, you can just keep scrolling, let's kind of talk about it. But here's just a map of showing you what cameras you currently have, which ones aren't working and need to be addressed, and which ones should be added because you don't have current visuals item. Um, looking at your ceiling tiles, you can keep scrolling through all this, but so every, every deficiency is law, that's public.
It's gonna not be in as soon as we're done. I didn't realize that was in here.
Yeah.
Thinking exactly what you were.
Yeah, it's a camera one, we don't need that.
Yeah.
Uh, so your stage, again, it's just all, all the deferred maintenance we logged. So if you keep scrolling here through all these, uh, what we did is put in the table, these are actually the locker room, touch on this quick. Um, this is, as you guys know, potentially looked at as part of the IEQ project to do in addition to that at one time. So there's a few different layouts here that you guys can look at if you choose to renovate the locker room. Um, kind of keeping it the same or going to a more single user style. Um, so this would be replacing it as is. Um, this one here is lockers in the middle of a single, single user shower. So just some different options for you, kind of done at a high level to give you guys ideas of, of ways to renovate that at a, at a lesser cost, with keeping kind of the plumbing where it is and just moving the walls around. Your doors and windows from that sixty-five wing, um, we just noted the, the current deficiencies in them and where they're worn and need replacement. Same with the windows, scroll on, sorry. This is a storage shed, so just kind of talking of, again, about, we worked with Patrick to kind of figure out what his needs were in a storage shed. Um, we can scroll down and put together kind of a layout of what the district would need if you guys decided to address that, um, what would be a better layout for them? For bays, for vehicles, where we can work on them, um, have a bathroom over there. Looking at the playground, which actually has already been addressed.
Okay, so if you had one hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
What would be the first thing in the eighty-four pages that you would tell us to spend money on?
I, well, this is what really we look at you guys for. You guys know your school, your community best, that's the decision I wanna make. But is what our job is, is to give you guys this data.
From a safety and, uh, facility perspective?
I would, um, in my opinion, it'd be kind of what we had just talked about, the.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we can go through this on our own.
Yes.
It wasn't attached before the board meeting, so we didn't have a chance to go through it prior to the board meeting, but I think we're all good with going through it on our own and then reaching out with questions.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Does everyone have this?
Yes.
Couple of them now?
Yeah, it's in their packet. So if you look in your packet, you should see a sheet, they're printing on both sides. Um, I, I apologize that it was little, I couldn't figure out how to get it on a legal sized sheets from my printer, so I went with this. Um, basically, as you look at this, this is how we're tracking the bond money that we're doing and what we're doing. If something is in yellow, it's been done already. Um, and as we're looking through, some of it, we're just continuing to keep this updated and moving the, um, and moving the money around where we're at, so. Just kind of transparency, I'll be trying to get this out to you. At each board meeting or every other board meeting or something, if there's major changes, so you can kind of see where we're at and everything. So if there's any questions, let me know.
Um, can we add a line item on here somewhere for robotics space? And the document, just so that we don't cite that. So I'm not sure.
That's a good idea.
Okay. And then, I, I mean, I'm, you know, I see we've spent some, some is already committed, so I would consider that gone. I feel like before we spend any more money, we need to get the things we already have working and obviously just mapping in, um, cameras, locks, safe detectors. Like, you know, the things that we have and I have already paid for and we're saying aren't working or aren't working effectively. Um, you know, we need to take care of what we have so far before we keep spending. That's my thought.
Security and safety.
Right. I don't know, what are, what are others? I agree with you.
I feel like we just did doors.
I'm not wondering.
I don't know. Most of the doors.
There's a few that don't have any access. Most of them accessible.
Great, but for example, we had talked about at one point, we really need locks on every single door in school. Because what we were told by the, the security, one of them, was that they've never seen a school have locks on every door unless it's like one of the high risk schools with violent students. So to me, it doesn't make sense that we worry about whether the locks work or not. It first should be, we need locks on every single door in the school and if not, get them off. And then which doors do we need locks on and then make sure they work.
And that probably, and that probably also is speaking to segmenting when we have athletics, so that they're.
Closing off sections.
Closing off, right?
Looking into that.
So I'm wondering if that might. So I'm wondering if that might be.
They used to have these like, like a metal accordion thing that they'd roll across the hall.
Yeah.
And like, you know, the cafeteria during games is a accident waiting to happen. The care of jumper caspers tops of the tables, and there's no way to like get them out, keep them out of there. There's no things that come down. So if we can have some sort of, don't they have dress shirts?
No.
Only on the way out.
Not on the end, by the gym.
Just on the entranceway because that was a fire. Those graduates were sent there for fire code.
Can we get the gates where there are more like a fence that grabs down, so that they're still visual?
Visual group.
Right. Just an idea.
That's fire code, you can't have these. You can't have, that's why they're all locked up and.
Oh.
They're still there, you just can't.
Can't analyze them.
Cause in case that there, if there was, happens to be a fire.
Everybody's gotta.
Everybody's gotta get out. So if the gate's there and it's locked, that's one.
Cause the problem that.
Exit. It's an exit.
Yeah.
One solution is putting doors there that are wired, wired doors. That's another access control item.
Oh, that would open if the fire lamps are going on?
They would shut if the fire lamps would go off. But they'd have to shut the right way.
But you can unlock if there are fires.
Right. Just like diving office and, double high school guidance counselor, those two doors. Yeah, makes sense.
And like, I don't know if all of our times are, and I know Kat, you're gonna punch me for bringing this up again, but like, when people come into our school, they still don't know where the girls' bathroom is. And so we had a sign taped on the wall with electric tape for the girls' bathroom. And it's like, we just spent all this money making it look so nice and then, yep.
Sign outside the bathroom.
Right, but if you're standing at concessions or walking down that hall, you don't know that it's around the corner down that hall.
Yeah. I go to a lot of schools for days.
I didn't miss the boys' and girls' bathroom outside the gym. I should have probably, probably put them on the wall.
Yeah, or like, we had, when I was working, working admissions, people were coming in for a community ed class. And were asking us where this, whatever classroom is. So maybe if there's a way to help with community ed members coming in those back doors to know where, whatever rooms are most used for community ed to get to.
Classrooms are.
What? I was saying, we've, we usually put, we have reusable signs that we put up that are um pretty blatantly obvious which direction to go. Um, and the email, people always get emails ahead of time as well, so um, but yeah, we can work together to make sure that we're saying and coordinating the right messages in the right areas.
Assuming they go in the correct door, which they oftentimes do that.
Correct. Okay, any other questions, comments on this topic? Okay, please go. What's up? Oh, do you wanna? Uh, let's just do it now. Okay. Um, so if you flip this over, if there's no further questions on colored side, flip this over. Um, Julie was not able to make it today. Um, I will, if there's any questions, I'll relay them to her or I'll forward them. However, um, it was brought to my attention that you might want to hear follow-up to the last meeting and the taxpayer input. And so one of the things that you'll notice here is as Julie went through and worked with each individual that was here. And she has the dates and times on the other side is when she was able to speak with them and connect up with them, and she met individually with each of them. Um, I'll key, I'll key in on what's said at the top, school voter approved levies. They include all levies and debt obligations approved by the voters in that school district. And other school levies, those are the things that include school levies for community services and debt obligations that are not voter approved. So just giving that translation first. Um, if you take a look at each individual here, you'll notice a couple of things.
Oh, we're not saying names, right?
No.
Okay.
Um, the main reason the taxpayer saw an increase was due to the values increasing at astronomical levels. And homestead exemptions being taken away or decreased. Now, I found out something new in this process. I didn't realize that if your house moves up to that four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand level, you don't get homestead credit. I had no idea that was.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that either.
I, I was like, okay.
But yet you still live.
You still live in it, you still own it, that's your homestead, but there's no credit for that, which is a little counterintuitive to me. Um, but as you take, so as you take a look, some people just, just didn't have this homestead exclusion. And some people had it in twenty-three, but it went away in twenty-four because of the valuation increase. Um, Julie is still waiting for a return phone call from the county. Um, she, she's called out multiple times to try and get someone to return her call to discuss these. This is what she found on her own and went to the, you know, told the individuals were fortunate in the fact that in one of her previous jobs, she did work for the county. Which I didn't realize either, doing exactly this. Um, but one of the individuals that came in did also tell her that when they asked why the values went up so much. The people from the county said, well, the state made us do that. So I don't know, you know, these are all just things that she's kind of said to me. Um, in preparation for this, but so everyone here was very happy that she sat down and met with them. And that she actually took the time to do the explaining, explaining. Lucy, got some explaining to do is about where I was gonna go with that one. Um. So just kind of FYI for you, and that's why I just put them back here.
Yeah, thank you.
Private data, if you wanna.
That is helpful.
Yeah.
Why are these players went up so much more?
Yeah. Thanks for the help.
Yeah.
Um, okay, we, it is still on board member report. Okay, Greg, my, thank you, Matt. Garcia.
I just wanted to say that we are about time for the superintendent mid-year eval. Um, looking at that timeline, I'm gonna work with Mindy and hopefully try to get that done before her leave you. So you guys can all expect something to come to you guys in your emails, and then we might have to either just, uh, you and I need to do with her like you did um once before. Or hold a special board meeting to go over that with you, or however we work out that. But yeah, we'll look out for that in preparation.
Uh, Jeff?
Oh.
Thank you.
I'm in.
And I, thank you. Okay, here on number nine, and we will start with high school.
Good evening. Uh, we have, actually, it hasn't been too long since our last board meeting in terms of school days. I think we're at, day was maybe day ten since the last board meeting. So we haven't had a whole lot of school days, thanks to a few snow days and winter break and everything else. Uh, we have end of our semester at the high school tomorrow. Uh, so that, we're, it's with all kinds of stuff. Uh, as Lily mentioned, there's a little bit of anxiety and stress among students of, you know, maybe I haven't done as much as I should have for the last four months. And now suddenly I gotta get stuff done and get ready, get prepared for these final projects or tests. Uh, so that tends to obviously increase their stress level. Uh, also, a little bit for staff because they end up basically ending a school year and starting a school year within about, about seventy-two hours. So it's a pretty stressful time for staff in that they gotta close out all six of their classes. Get ready for a whole new group of kids, new group of, in some places, brand new classes and everything else. So it's a lot of turnover, so hug a staff member if you see them. They're pretty busy right now. Uh, the second big thing is shortly after we get into second semester, February, which means we start our registration process. So I kind of outlined the registration process there with some dates. Uh, the big date is that, that first full week in February is when students will get all their information for registration for the next school year. So they get um some sheets, our online coursebook goes live, so they can pull that up and look at that the following week. Uh, one thing that we're doing that's new is we're having a registration night. We're gonna combine that with spring conferences. So we do a little bit of conference time as well as a question and answer for registration. So if you're sitting there and you have no idea what to tell your kid, cause it's your first kid through the system. Or it is a student who, you know, is just taking a very different path than your other kids have had. You can send them to school by themselves, you can go with them. Teachers are gonna be available to answer some of those questions. You know, what class is gonna be better for me to take for the future that I'm planning? What's the difference between this class and that class? What's the difference between honors and an AP versus a regular level? All those things you can go and ask them. So that's something new we're trying. Uh, we're hoping that that helps to kind of ease some of that registration stress that sometimes happens.
I think that's a great idea and help get people here to look at this.
Yeah, we're doing a bunch of different things that day that'll also be one of the community forum nights for uh potential new calendar. And so we're kind of trying to tie a bunch together to keep on building that. And then February thirteenth is that registration. So that's when.
Thirteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, I screwed up in my report. I put the twelve.
No, the twelfth is the next.
Nice, okay.
Yeah. Uh, but the thirteenth then, that day is when our students were registered for the next school year. Um, ideally, we'd have a hundred percent of our students register on that day. That's not the way it works out. Uh, so we end up spending a week or two chasing down those missing registrations. From that, it generates our numbers, which then allow us to start to build our schedule and the master calendar. So that gets, takes a little while. From that, we get to figure out our staffing and everything else for the next year. So you can read through and kind of see some of those details. Um, one thing with registration that I did want to bring up a little bit, uh, is something we're struggling with, and it's not just us. It's like the whole state of Minnesota, uh, due to COVID and then us having to do like a slate of switches. The ability for students to do online classes and the willingness to do online classes is skyrocketing in state markets. Um, and that's putting a lot of stress on schools because when they go online, they're actually no longer our student for that portion of the day. So along with that, we lose any funding associated with them. And obviously, we've already budgeted our staffing for the year based on their registration. So that tends to create a lot of stress on schools, and again, not just us, but statewide is having this issue right now.
Have we talked about kids wanting to do? Have we ever like talked to the kids wanting to do specific classes online and see like what, if there's a common trend?
We've had some, some informal pieces. I already have a survey ready to go out next week to any families that are PSEO or online. To try and get a little more organized set of data.
Sure.
Um, when they do it, they fill out a form, a lot of them put down, you know, this is a very vague answer.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna throw a little more detail. But then we're also starting to look at what potential changes can we make for next year to help minimize this? Um, you know, it's, it's a little bit of COVID effect lingering where, you know, I had all the freedom in the world for a year and a half. And now, you know, I don't want to be at school for seven hours, so I'm gonna take three online classes and I'm only gonna be there half a day. So there's only a little bit of that that's coming up. There's some of, online's really easy in some subjects, much easier than being in person. So that's something that is attractive, where we're, you know, a little bit short-sighted, where I'm gonna take the easy path. And then I'm not as prepared as I could have been for college. Uh, there's a little bit of, you know, just, I don't necessarily want to take this class advantage. So I mean, you got, those are probably the three reasons.
Are we allowed to hybrid some of those classes? You say the curriculum changes a little from going from in-person to online.
So when they go online, they actually enroll at a different school.
So even if we hybrid, we can't not have like a modified?
We do not have permission from the state to be an online provider.
So does that mean PSEO kids, we lose that?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, yeah.
PSEO and online, and they're very different things.
Okay, yeah.
So PSEO, you're enrolling at university, and you're essentially getting dual credits. So you get credit for college, you also get credit for high school. Online, you're actually enrolling at a different high school.
Right.
For a portion or the entirety of your day.
What would we have to do to be able to offer online education?
I can speak to that. It's a very lengthy process. I was working on it up in Red Lake um prior to leaving, and we were going on two years, and that was with the state giving. Uh, they gave a little window of grace after COVID. But if schools wanted to do online learning, you could get grandfathered in and you could keep a few things going. And then they kind of walked you through all the steps, but it's pretty intensive.
Yeah, we'll say that we, we started doing that in one, we actually had an online school that ran for about two years. Uh, the district lost about one point five.
And didn't they shut down the ability to even apply for that? Cause I think we addressed that, didn't they last school year? Thought we talked about this last school year.
They might have.
And I thought they like shut down applications for that?
I wouldn't be.
And the short school week, right? Cause that was kind of, was gonna hybrid it, yeah.
But no, we're not able to be an online provider. So when, you know, students or families talk about, I'm gonna go online, that now makes them a part-time student. So if there's a student who's doing three classes online and three classes at high school, we only get half of it.
So why is this one?
If it's one class, then we get five, six, yeah, so it's all pro-rated, yeah. I mean, there are some valid reasons to go online. I mean, we have a student who's taking Chinese online because that's important to their family. We obviously don't offer Chinese. Um, you know, so there's a few cases like that where you're trying to take something we don't offer. Or, you know, you're trying to do something for health reasons where you medically cannot be at school. There's a lot of good reasons for it. Um, right now, I feel like the number who are taking is exceeding the amount that have really good reasons. And, and it leads into a whole bunch of things. So that is something that we're looking at actively. How do we start to scale that back a little bit? Um, so that we're getting closer to, you know, those really legitimate, really good reasons, hey, this is best truly for my learning. I'm not doing it just because I want to be able to leave at one o'clock. Or, you know, I want to be able to work starting at two thirty, or, you know, we're getting a wave in some of those reasons hopefully.
I do, I do know in the past, there's certain teachers that have had a lot of students that go online.
Correct.
But to bypass that teacher.
Yep.
Which one can we do as a district to prevent that?
Yep.
Yeah.
That also administrators.
Yeah, we're working through some of that.
I might see a lot of that. When mine for the, a couple of online classes, it was due to the teacher who's no longer in the district. Um, and that was why the majority of people that were online, I forget, was because of the teacher. But he also um liked that it was, there's just a list of assignments that he could work on in any order when he wants to. So like if he was up at ten at night and could focus at that time, that's when he would work his way through a whole bunch of them. Um, and it just worked better for him. Um, and, right.
Super attractive.
Yeah. But would we have, you know, certain classes that we're seeing a large amount go online for? And obviously, we can always change personalities and we're gonna always butt those heads, but maybe there is something that can be done about the curriculum for that class. To make them be more flexible for the students, we can work with them. They can stay in person, but still work at kind of their own pace.
Yep.
And we can be innovative like that.
Absolutely.
We have to move them where they're at.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I have an idea. This, I'm just shooting from the hip here, but I have an idea. So something that could be in visuals would be maybe how decreasing funding for the schools can affect our community. Our businesses, our neighborhoods, our, all the things. I think that that is something that some people might not realize, how that goes down and can affect things along with.
Don't want to see their child being successful in a class though. They're, speaking of some parents who's child wants to go online for a particular class. You're gonna back your child and their success is the best they have.
And that's seen all online.
Mm-hmm, right.
But it is.
I think some families need to be educated too. Sometimes it's easier for the parents to let their kid go online. So there's, I think, caveat to that too, so.
Yeah, and like a lot of those.
Yeah.
The question of how do you best educate families of them? And I don't know, I would guess the vast majority of families do not know that when your kid goes online, you lose the money. Right? There's some that wouldn't care, but it's a lot more than just. Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of how do you educate a community when you don't have a good way to get all that information? But yeah, that's something that we'll struggle with. And once we get a lot of that data from students, we can start to see, okay, what exactly are your reasons? Um, you know, then we can start to brainstorm. Uh, we have a few ideas as far as things that we could do to kind of start to minimize the explosion that we're seeing happening. And then there's also the working with staff and working with those hotspots that have happened.
Is there a target date for when the calendar will be decided and approved? Because we already have families asking. The school year calendar?
That's in my, again, just on my calendar. Oh, so, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, when I say calendar, I'm talking about class schedule.
Oh, I thought in here you, there was a community meeting about the calendar.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a night of twelve. And then there'll also be another one the night of the twenty-seventh of February during the garden roundups. We're going to try and hit bookends of the school, the olders and the youngers. Um, and I'm working on getting a couple that will be online. So if parents can't come in, or people can't come in, they can engage online. But I, I just wanted to throw, in my report, I'll throw up proposals, you know, just a one-week early calendar. To give you the board a couple of ideas going forward, what this would look like.
No, sorry, my question is, when will a decision be made or a recommendation be made on what the calendar will look like for next?
Like hoping before the next or by the next coordinated.
Okay.
The next coordinated. Oh, that soon? That soon? Uh, yeah, well, that's what I'm hoping for, right? Okay, great.
So then the final item up here is my spotlight for the month. Uh, did it on our bucket filler of the week, which is a new student recognition program. Uh, came from our student advisory group, they're the ones that kind of brainstormed the idea. And then our PBIS group kind of took it and ran it. Uh, so the short version is that teachers see something exceptional. They fill out a little ticket for the student. They let them know typically, hey, you know, that was really great to see what you just did. I'm going to fill out a little ticket for bucket filler. It goes into a bucket, of course. And then we draw once a week. So then every Monday morning, myself and Lance get to walk into a classroom. And we do, you know, a little spiel and we announce who the bucket fillers for that week. And we go into the hallway and they get their picture taken. Uh, they get some Lancer swag, they get a free alacard item, they get a parking spot out front. Uh, they get their picture taken and post on social media and a few other things. So, it's gone really well.
That's fun.
It's kind of neat to see, so.
And if you look for the parking spot, it is a bucket.
Yeah.
That they fill, a Lancer bucket and with a sign.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Moulton had fun creating.
That's fun, too.
Yeah. Um, the ironic piece is that, so we've had four winners so far. None of the four have a vehicle. So no one has actually used the parking spot.
Yeah, I got that parking spot, but they can sense it.
Yeah, so, uh, but none of the four have actually had a vehicle. So maybe next week will be the week. So that's it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, on to middle school.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, we're, tomorrow night, we're going to have our first Students of the Month dinner. Um, last year, we did a celebration at the end of the year for all of the students of the month. And, you know, some of the kids were like, what? I was student of the month. Forgot that they were student of the month since September. And so we decided that waiting until the last part of the school year wasn't a good idea. We broke it down into a semester, PBIS team is doing a dinner. They sent nice invitations to the families and um, Pizza Ranch has, has donated the pizzas for, for that dinner as well. Um, you know, we're going to hold it in the packs room, so it'll be kind of a different process than like our Breakfast of Champions. Um, but just another way to recognize the kids for doing a great job. So that'll be, that'll be kind of fun looking forward to that tomorrow night. Um, really proud of the, the building leadership team for, for their efforts. Um, you know, one of the, the big thing that we kind of under, under, we took over as a, as a priority was our PBIS. And now we've got that about eighty percent implemented now. And so we've started to look at what's the next thing that we really need to, to look at revamping and, and enhancing. And, um, our MTSS, um, is, is an area that we need to, um, really focus on and revamp. So that we have kind of a standardized way of identifying students who are struggling and, um, you know, what kind of supports are we going to provide? What interventions are going to be used? What kind of data are we going to collect? Um, what are we going to do with the data? And then, um, how are we going to continue to track that and provide those, uh, those resources for the kids? And so that's going to be kind of the, the big undertaking of the, the middle school building leadership team, um, kind of ongoing. And so, uh, that's something, we met, uh, Jen Gepfert, uh, joined our, our building leadership team yet, meeting yesterday. And, uh, was, was quite helpful with just, uh, you know, kind of picking apart what, uh, where we're at right now. And, and then, uh, she's going to provide some resources for us moving forward as well, that we can tap into. And so, um, just, uh, excited about the work that they're doing and the attitude that they have towards providing more support for our kids. Um, and setting up for success moving forward. So that's pretty cool. Um, and then I did not add any pictures to my report this time, so maybe the next time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? On to elementary school.
I included two pictures to cover for Josh. We had the sing-along, which was the day that we had our last board meeting. So there's the pictures of it. Um, we actually had a discussion, uh, at our building leadership team about whether or not to open this up to the public. And some of the things that came up were, in addition to kind of like building security and managing a large crowd. Um, also that beautiful hardwood floor and if we had it, you know, during winter, uh, could be slushy and salty to ruin that floor. Also a compromise, um, ideas, uh, that came up were to have staff either record a snippet of their class singing and post it on their, um, aptugee account or something, or communicated with home or live streaming. So some really good ideas to help keep this tradition alive and, and connect the larger community with also managing the facility. So, that was a bucket fill. Um, we're back at it. Uh, this, next week is our data, um, universal screening. So we're going to get data on how our kids are doing after the first trimester, semester of, um, classroom interventions that are happening. So, kind of to Josh's point, you know, we, we are also working on our multi-tiered system of supports to make sure that each and every student is succeeding and getting the support they need. So, looking forward to those data meetings next week. Or on, uh, in two weeks, yeah, January thirtieth.
Any questions or comments? Alrighty, on to community ed.
Catalog's out. Take a look. You can click that link. Looks great. Um, the district edition has been well received. Um, so yeah, not a lot's happened since the last, uh, time we were here together. But I did put a picture at the bottom of my report. We had a, a Jesmike class last week. And so that's adults making Jesmike trinket trays in the high school art room. Pretty fun.
I had a former board president, uh, comment, um, how he enjoyed seeing the update from the school in the community. Like that that was a great way to communicate with the community and that was a great idea.
And I think he would say one to send the email, probably.
It's a good idea. People look at it.
Yeah, it's something we want to keep continuing, so that's sort of going to be. Okay, we, any comments or questions for that? Thank you. Alright, we are on to building finger and transportation.
Um, so there was a few things done over winter break and three days after we were there to work. So there handled a few filter changes. Uh, we had control board go out, one of the furnaces at the district office that got replaced. Um, also during that break, we did a lockalouche show, which Nicole went over. And I posted, um, a link for a little informational sheet for the staff to be aware of. Uh, state permits finally came back from beginning of last week. But with the weather, we're going to hold off to pour the puddings, probably, until it starts to stabilize a little bit. Winter's here. Um, Tuesday, it was quite the mess on the parking lots, sheets of ice in all six parking lots in the district. That was pretty fun. And, so we have one custodian that just started on Monday and we just built possibly the other position today. If everything comes back, great. So we should be poised that by the twenty ninth.
Awesome. Yeah.
Going to be.
Yeah.
I think that is it.
Do we, do our custodians do the shoveling and contract out, uh, following or?
Custodians do the salping and the ramp and the stairs. Other than that, the snow removal is all done by.
Both sidewalks, parking lots.
That's all contracted.
And we're still doing the food shelf?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, every Tuesday and then last week.
No, no, I mean, the. Snow removal.
Sorry, I didn't hear you talking.
Yeah, yeah.
All good.
That would imagine total ABD moment.
Yeah.
Yeah. Squirrel. Okay. Squirrel's a real. Any comments or questions for Ash? Okay, on to superintendent.
Okay, so a couple, just a couple of things, and I did some links in here, which I want, you guys to let me know if you like them. Cause I linked in some of the documents I'm talking about, so if you want to go do a little deeper dive, you can. Um, I didn't link the handbook. Uh, this is a new one that Brittany put a lot of time, energy and effort into. Um, I would really like to get that up and running. We were confronted with a couple of just little like food service things that weren't quite right in one, from one handbook to another, that were just called to our attention. So we know they're right in this one. So I'm, I would like to get that posted on the web and start making a transition. If board wants to do a informational kind of learning session about the handbook and what we're doing, you know, what we did with it and how it was done. Um, I'd be more than happy to schedule something like that. Coming up, just talked to Brittany about it. Um, flexible learning schedules. So this is, oh, actually, we're going to, would you hand those out so I don't have to gimp around? Um, okay, so flexible learnings, learning year. I put the link in there so anyone can go around and kind of go to the website from MDE and read up a little bit more. What is it about? What's, what are we doing?
Thank you.
Um, and then I put together just a mock-up one-week early schedule. So, as we look at this, if we were to start, normally our kids come in September third. Um, but if we went one week early, the proposal would be that they come in on September, or August twenty-sixth and go for that full week of school, five, six, five extra days. Um, teachers would come in the week of the nineteenth. Now, because this is a change and, um, people might have things planned. The thought process, when I've talked to teachers and other parents and just people who have been around, who have been looking at this and, and looking at ideas. Um, I talked to the PTO about it. Jacob talked to his, um, his parent advisory committee and the student advisory committee just to try and brainstorm some ideas. So as we roll this out, we've got some good stuff going. Um, the thought was it might be easier to do the first year one week back. So that we're, we're coming a week early. And then the second year, which would be twenty-five, twenty-six, go with it two weeks early. Um, what this will do, and if you take a look, so some of the things that parents said during our strategic direction meetings, our strategic roadmap meetings with Julie, the team where it's needed, talking about spring breaks, talking about wanting some additional time that they can work into the day. Um, most recently at Jacob's parent advisory committee, um, they talked about ways that that would work better. You know, not always a break around, um, Easter, because things get more expensive, things are busier. So is there a way we could throw in a break at different times? One of the suggestions was what about doing a Monday, or a Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday break? So you work the weekend in, but you can still have two, three-day weekends on either side. As you're looking at this, I just mocked up really quickly kind of where semester one would end. You know, what would be the days we want to keep? It's unanimous from the teachers. We're going to keep the teacher workshop the day after Apple Fest. That's, that really did a lot of good stuff for everyone. Um, but put in more of the traditional things we have. If we went straight through and didn't take any breaks the second semester, so second semester would begin on the, on the twentieth. It would end on the sixteenth. That would be eighty-seven days the second semester. Then we could go eighty-six days if we went straight. We would end, um, on the twenty-third, so that would be the day before Memorial Day. Um, if we put in a four-day spring break sometime in March is what I'm thinking, because that's the month that would be, it's the most consecutive school days. And that's, that's the time where sports changes over. And so if you went right after winter season before spring season.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down.
Yeah.
A break in sports.
Break in sports would be. Yep. And then if we did like a Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, it also, if they're traveling, cheaper tickets, cheaper, you know. Um, but then that would still get us out on the day, on the thirtieth, if we did that, which is roughly what we've been doing now. Teachers would probably have to come back for one day afterwards. This is just a student schedule that I'm locked up. Uh, but you can kind of see what the thought process would be. And then if we moved earlier, that's even if we go the next week. So if in twenty-five, um, twenty-six, we want to start two weeks before September second. That would mean starting on like the eighteenth of August. And then we would be able to end semester one at Christmas break. And so then when kids go on Christmas break, they're really on Christmas break. They're not worried and being anxious about, did I get this done or did I, you know?
Did the finals.
Finals and all of that. There's not that delay afterwards. Then when they come back right after Christmas, they would start semester two. Um, we still have time to do a similar type break in there and get out before Memorial Day.
By then, we have all of our, our air, like air conditioning units in the secondary building up and running, because August is hot.
That's, well, so for this coming year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-four, twenty-five, we will have, we are looking at contingency plans. So, in case a chiller doesn't come in for that gym, okay? Chillers for everything else, I think they said we're pretty much on track, but it's a gym one that I think they're worried about.
It was, yeah, scheduled for like August first.
Yeah, it was scheduled to be here August first. Worst-case scenario, if it isn't here enough, if it is here August first, we can get it scheduled before the middle of August. We'll be able to get that put in and done. If it doesn't arrive, because shipments have been delayed, then we have a contingency plan of getting a rental chiller. And so a rented chiller that will go into that same spot so that it does the cooling and the balancing.
How would, uh, how would starting earlier in August affect your fall sport?
We were talking about that. Um, generally, fall sports start three weeks.
Yep.
The, the second week in August, so they're thinking they've got three weeks left. So there still would be time in that first week for two-a-days. However, it would really help a lot of the kids from the outlying communities where parents don't have the ability to drive them in or maybe they're working or, um, so we can move into that. And I also, um, Terry Donovan was at the meeting tonight when we were talking about it, too, and he asked me the same question. And, um, and we talked about, you know, winter sports do two-a-days too. They just have to do them differently than fall sports.
And not all do.
And not all do, no. I know I did when I was swimming. You know, we'd get up in the morning and I'd have a five-thirty, six AM swim practice and then we'd get up after school and we'd have another one. You know, we'd get up in the morning and I'd have a five-thirty, six A M swim practice and then we'd get up after school and we'd have another one. So basically I walked around for a whole season with green hair.
Yeah, they could go before and after school and then they're not having to worry about transportation when this, when school is on in session. That's guys pretty common.
That, I think that's one of the hardest things, uh, the two-a-days during the summer, they get their kids in at eight o'clock and then they have a time off at lunch and then they have to be back to get it trees.
Right, right. One parent's work.
Yeah, and parents work, so they can't get their kids there.
Okay, so the February board meeting is when you anticipate having the input and then a recommendation and then the board.
You can take the look.
Okay, perfect. And then for the handbook, um, I thought we had talked about doing an April. Uh, working session before the board meeting. So five to six at the April board meeting when you're back on the handbook before we publish it.
And I couldn't remember, and I was just, when I was talking with Brittany right now, I was, today we were looking at it going, well, jeez, it's semester term, maybe it'd be good to get that out there so that we know.
Well, I think we wanted to make sure that the, the board would. Had a chance to. Read it.
Okay.
Sorry? I worked there. So five to six on the April board meeting days. Would be a working session on the handbook.
So, let me see what else is in there. So then, um, a couple of things and the M S, so that's flexible learning schedule. Very quickly, the M S A leadership conference was incredible. Again, they just had some great, um, great workshops, et cetera. If you click on the link for M S A leadership conference, I'm gonna be doing something with this so that everyone can get the information from the handouts. So I downloaded all the handouts and, oh, you might not be able to get it, but basically what it is, is I downloaded all the handouts. I'm in the process of moving them into a file on Drive. So if there's anything you're interested in, you can go in and look there. There are a couple I would highly recommend. I, I attended one that was basically, it was just titled, "Your employee did what?" And it, and it kind of went through all, you know, some of the new information on discipline and tracking and doing some of those things. And then there was the equivalent to that from a board perspective, which I would highly recommend you look at. And it's, what, what happens, basically, I can't remember the name, it was something about what happens when personnel issues are brought to the board table. And so that's got some great, um, great pointers in it for board members to just keep, keep on top of and know. Also did a, I did a few others that were, um. More moving, you know, more moving forward with things, some curriculum stuff and some other, I did some other legal things too. But it was great and you'll be able to find all of them in there. The next one is the pay equity report. I'm in the process of working on that, I gave a little definition of what pay equity is. This is something that when I came into the district, you do this every three years. And. When I came in, um, Stephanie had just finished it, it was like a year and a half late. And so this seems like we're doing it fairly early again. But between different people, you know, prior to being here, it was my business manager who did it all the time. Um, and so I think that the multitude of business managers and other things, but we'll be good, it'll be in, we'll be set to go. And if you are really a pay equity nerd, like I'm turning into, you can click on that and that goes the M D E website to tell you all you ever wanted to know about pay equity. Which it'll also be good when we go into negotiations with N S E A, cause that's what we used the last time. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, education Minnesota.
Uh, ironic that you guys asked Apex for the condensed version, because this one condensed.
Oh, boy, oh, boy.
So, apologize, uh, but also, we're in two slides. So, quick two, uh, Mrs. Christman's investigative bio, found project creating a mini crime scene. That's always fun, I gotta be honest, my preferred is always when they like stage murders and they have to try to figure out who the murderer is, because we get to get involved. But it's fun. I mean, they get to create and then stage it and come up with it, and then they gotta go through the science of trying to come up with who done it. So, again, just a good time.
And it's amazing, like, the detail that they put in and, yeah, it's really, it's really neat.
Yeah, they, they really are.
They have to create evidence that other jurors can use and figure out, okay. So I see this here and then, yep, that's a piece of evidence, then they get to look at it, they get to analyze the evidence. It's a fantastic final project.
I'm impressed with Creator.
And then next one, elementary music, um, this one is really cool. I mean, most people, and I think in music class, the kids are playing, but the secondary just were writing their own music in two-quarter time. So one of the best ways to learn is to have the kids create, and that's they're doing, they're creating their own music. And I, I'm sure they played it too, and that's just really exciting, me to take ownership over that, over that. Um, the last point I do wanna make, I would like to credit eighth-grade advisory middle school, um, they've done a lot of work with the food shelf. Those kids have raised, um, uh, a, a bunch of different resources for us. They keep asking us what we need more of, um, so again, they're trying to instill those kids gratitude. Had a meeting with them, um, not a lot long ago to discuss what gratitude means, so again, just grateful of the people we have in the district. That's all you got for me.
Thanks, Brittany. Did we invite all that from?
I think it's done back there, so. I'll be gone.
Okay, if we are on to number eleven, review and informational items and we, let's just pull up the budget sheet and balance, budget update and balance sheet. Did anyone have any questions on these? Same thing or is there nothing?
We're, we're pretty, there's nothing really of note, we're pretty much on track for where we're supposed to be right now.
Okay, moving on then. C enrollment. I think I had a few people add, some people drop. I did wanna call out since it was spoken about earlier that P S E O is deducted down here at the bottom, so whatever you're doing is reported, that does reflect. Those students not in the building. But not just the online.
We don't see any online, right? Or do we, do we have a list of online?
Um, high school, I don't know.
I'll double check.
See if we can maybe get some sort of numbers.
I'm not sure if that includes that or not. Well, if they take online, because you have to attend a certain number of classes to be counted as even a student here, right?
There's two types of online, there's the comprehensive, which means you are a full-time online student. So I'm gonna go and attend Minnesota Virtual and that's all I'm gonna do, I never said fuck the high school. They un-enroll the district higher, so they wouldn't show up anywhere on this report, period. The other type is the supplemental.
Right.
And that's where you have to attend fifty percent or more of your classes in person at a physical building. So that would be at our building, you know, and then they can take up to.
They would be counted as enrollment, right?
Even if they're not full-time, right?
I believe so unless they're rolled into the P S E.
Right, right, but just regular online, uh, P S E.
Yeah.
Like if they take a class or two, they're still counted as a full-time body?
I believe, that'd be my guess, but.
Any students, I know that like, um, just for hands or specialized services, they are not included, so like part-time students, they're not included.
But if it's someone who is eighty-five percent hours, they're probably in here.
Okay.
That'd be my guess, but.
And maybe we could add, add a line on the enrollment, uh, report that shows, um, cause it would be like class periods, right?
It'd be class periods.
Like maybe show like how many class periods are being taken online. Total class period, total online class period by grade. Yeah, so if we could add that, I think that might.
That'd be helpful, see trends.
Yeah. And it's, it's gonna stay the same for the next semester.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not jumping, it's, but you're gonna see a drastic change from like January to February.
So then, from eighth grade, ninth grade.
And then, I know we're capturing high-level numbers here, but is there a way to potentially drill down? Like, you know, we're doing per grade, how many classes or whatever, you know, is that for us or for them?
To figure out which, to figure out which class, which classes are, just so we can see a trend, is it a?
I know that, I would not be comfortable putting that in public work.
No, I don't mean for that, yeah, I just mean for, yeah, in the districts.
Not for on here, not for on there.
No.
We would want that up.
No.
Yeah, I have.
And pretty much that new, the new precision analytics that we're gonna be using, talking, saying with drill down and the fact that we've got the behavior up here too. We can drill down on any of those things, so I can look at behavior trends and I can drill down and see where kids are, what are the great levels that are right.
Are we using that right now?
Yep. Yep, it's in preliminary usage right now.
So we're just getting basic data.
Learn it out, learn it and work the kinks out. That will be, once we do the M T S S date next week, the days next week, and do the testing. On the thirtieth, we will be using that moving forward, to look at where kids are and figure out what they're doing.
Any of our numbers and data, how are we with absent?
Uh, I pulled that recently, I was gonna wait till the end of the semester, it's a part of my project.
Very interesting.
Can get back to it.
Yeah.
It was way down.
It was, or seemed good.
We missed. That's ten days worth of data.
Yeah, but you're still, I mean, the kids are coming back and forth and getting anxious to leave and they're still like. Now, that's usually when you spend people.
Um, so I know we had talked about adding some. Data. And I felt like there was not, like, it wasn't clear what we were asking for. And so I had suggested to Mindy, um, one of the things we use at, um, my work is called a user story. So it would be like, as a blank, I want to blank so that I can blank. So we could have user stories at a board level, like as a board member, I want to know how many of the bullying reports are substantiated so that I can. Revise policies or whatever. So if we could write some of those user stories and share that so that when they're building their reports, they understand better, like, what are we looking for? And what would be the outcome in, if you see that data? You know, are we gonna update a policy, are we going to fund more people coming in to, you know, mental health professionals coming in or, um, you know? So I think if we could put it in the form of those user stories, that makes it easier when they're building those types of reports, yeah. So if maybe we could put, I can put together a couple, and if you all want to put together some and give us to Mindy. Kind of what you're hoping to get out of the additional data, um, so that there's a, you know, it's not just data, it's a look at data, but like we can actually do something at the board with those numbers.
When Nicole told me that, I shared a date with her when I checked in this time, and met with John Madeki after he was at the board meeting. And we met afterwards and we talked about things. I wish I would have known that when I met with him, well, the user story at that time, because trying to figure out exactly what do we want and what is he looking for. So I, I think I got a good handle on it and I'm just gonna circle back with you too, but it was a great meeting. And you'll see on the donations list that he, you know, he has, right, did a nice donation to the school tour.
I, I mean, I, I just wanna note again for the, this month, that I have concerns with student behavior in our schools and, um, and not hearing that it's improving. Parents are concerned, students are concerned. I really had a hard time updating some of the policies when I feel like they're not being enforced and that we're not following them. And so I just wanted to share that. It's really frustrating. Okay, any other comments or questions related to student behavior?
I think maybe we need a workshop on ability behavior policy.
I would like that.
As a board.
Yeah, I mean, something you want absolutely.
Maybe the, like bullying. Uh, policy up there as well, there seems to be a, a level of tolerance for it, but.
Is that something we feel is more important than spending time on the handbook? Because, I mean, we should prioritize, but I'm sure we don't want an extra hour of meetings every month, but what, what do you think is a priority?
Well, handbook kinda works in, hand-to-hand with that. So, I mean, we could do handbook this and maybe two months too. I mean, the end of the school year, working toward the end of the school year, that'd be important to follow, you'd be the change or thoughts.
Yeah, I first, I think, I feel like I'd be interested in knowing. Doing some root cause analysis first to figure out where the prop, like, where's the gap? Is, is the issue a family, is the issue a student, is it a teacher, is it admin? Like, just kinda doing some root cause analysis to figure out where the issue lies, or is it the policy? I don't know. I feel like we need to drill down and figure out if there's an actual issue or if it's just. Execution.
Because if it's execution, we don't need to change the policy.
Right, it's not our issue, execution's not on us. But I feel like we have policies that we're not aligned with, and to me, that's worse than not having. Like, either the policy needs to change or we need to follow the policy.
Right.
And enforce it. I'm more interested in maybe doing a drill down to figure out where the issue is, and I don't know what that needs to look like, if it's. Couple of us meet with Mindy and come up with a survey of some sort or. An evaluation of some sort to figure out. I don't know, maybe that could be part of what comes out of a working session and what could we, we talk about, what do we as a board want to?
I'm nervous to wait until April to do that as a working session and have all of this time to buy, if it is hurting students. Members set for next year, but nothing's made from this year to change it.
I agree, and I'm very concerned our numbers are gonna keep dropping in enrollment if something doesn't change. At least I'm speaking at the middle school level, because I, I don't have any high schoolers right now, but.
I don't even have a C of last year at the middle school level.
And I think once they're gone, they're gone. So. I think if we're gonna do a work session, it needs to be done before next. Board meeting. So are we thinking something before Mindy goes out?
Yeah.
You want her there, I think it would need to be done before that. And is that just us board getting together? What is that, who's that involving?
So a working session is open, so it's an open meeting, it's just, we're not doing, taking any actions, we're not voting on anything or not, it's just a discussion on certain topics. So we still would have to post it, three-day rule, public and, you know, attend. We're just not taking any action at that meeting.
And you, eighth is when you're, so you're here till the?
Seven.
The seventh, the eighth.
Uh, eighth is Thursday.
Okay, so it'd have to be before the seventh. Is there a ability for us to make sure that faculty, as far as like social work, counselors, whoever may be involved in some of the issues that they're seeing? whoever may be involved in some of the issues that they're seeing, can also be available and invited? I think some people will need an actual invite to remember rather than just throwing it all around the website or something.
And I think we can definitely invite, invite people and, and share with faculty, share with whatever that we're having at, because it's an after-hours thing, we can't require anyone to be there, but if people are interested.
Right. Um, Darcy, do you want to work with Mindy and try to pick dates and a time?
Yep. I can be into that one too.
I can be flexible, so if you want to, any, you can text board members if needed.
When does PBIS meet next?
Usually Tuesdays.
Every Tuesday? Each, each building is.
Each building's different, it's fine. And we met today because of just, we flipped from Wednesday to Tuesday, but usually Tuesdays after school, three thirty.
Alright, you're in the morning, Jeff, right?
Yeah. Seven fifteen Tuesday.
Um, okay, so we have a lot of policies. Um, Brittany, thank you for bringing the, the credit this time, um, for updating them. Some had very minor, very minor updates, um, that MSBA has recommended. I don't think there were any that had major changes or anything controversial, just minor updates to bring them into compliance. The school district system accountability policy was updated like last year, but it was waiting for some, something with Q, the, the Q comp team needed to add something to the policy. So I think admin was supposed to be doing something with it. So it can get updated once that part is completed and I can resend it if needed. I think it was last February that I updated that one, but I couldn't, I didn't know the answer to some of the things. And then eight oh six is Christmas management, that's going to get addressed at the next, um, agenda. So that one can come back then when we review it and make any recommended changes. Um, otherwise, I would zip the policy. Sure you all reviewed them very carefully before the board meeting, so we won't find out. Okay, and I did not see, school calendar was its own item on there, but I'm going to cross that off so that it would be covered up. So we are on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion?
Does he have donations? He didn't have any thank yous.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I just didn't think we have any, so when she said her that, you've made one up.
I didn't see it on there, I saw one. So I'll bring, I'll bring that thank you for the working session.
But he donated to something else. Would you say John, John, yeah, John did a donation, as part of my conversation with John, um, link came to me with me. We talked about the fact that we have a couch surfer population and some of the things we're looking to do in the school to broaden, you know, to broaden opportunities for kids, so if they need, um, shower, if they need to, you know, the food pantry, all of those different pieces that was, because he had, he had read an article I had done about the food pantry, um, that was in the Argus and so he was, L- Lancer Locker, sorry, yes. Um, and so he was worried, you know, what about, you know, are our kids embarrassed or isn't that? And so that's how we really got into the conversation, no, you know, they were very planned when they put it down.
We have an article in the Argus?
I've done three articles in the Argus, so there's one in there this week too.
Have they got into the Houston County news?
They don't respond.
Houston County Shopper.
They don't respond. I, I am going to take several of them, though, I've been saving them and I'm going to mail them to the editor of the Houston County Shopper and just say, so, they're taking better care of us than you are.
Can we put them on the district site?
Yeah, I didn't see it, yeah.
Yeah, let's have them linked to our district.
And I just emailed you my latest one, which is actually about the stewardship program.
Okay.
If I had had a little more time before the meeting, I was going to go pick up the Argus's.
Yeah, I missed them.
Because they, um, they're there, so. And my, my mu- my week is always the third week of the month, so.
So then you were talking to John.
So then, John, so I'm talking to John and he, we were going through all of this and he was really good. And then I got an email from him and said that he and his wife decided when they were talking that they wanted to do a donation for the kids who were couch surfing. And so, um, they brought in a substantial amount of like laundry soap and dryer sheets and, um, baggies that we can put, and then they brought quarters so that if they need to go to the laundromat, you need to do the research into how much it costs to do a load of laundry at the laundromat, so we'll put the quarters in there, we've got some of those being assembled now. In addition to that, there were all sorts of personal care items, you know, the little kits, you have the razors and the shampoo and toothpaste and everything in there. So, I mean, it was, it was a wonderful, a wonderful thing, I actually have a picture of it if anyone wants to see it after the, um, meeting. I took a picture of it before I took it over to the high school, so.
Well, let's include it for the next one.
Yes. So, it was, it was great.
Nice, okay, um, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any否? Okay, the consent agenda is approved, move to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned.